Tamara or Tom?
Neither one.
Me?
Yep, can hear you, can you hear me?
I can.
Hey. Yeah, our settings changed in here, so I wasn't sure which microphone to pick, so I wanted to make sure I had guessed the right one.
Yep, all good. Okay, thank you ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Hey Fay, just a heads up. We, I put as a test this study session on YouTube, so it's streaming live right now through the, through the website, so they're all hot mics.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Hello?
I'm not sure I'm gonna remember how to do any of this stuff in person.
I'm sure we can handle it. We do, we do have live mics. We are testing out a live stream to YouTube, so we, the mics on the live stream are live right now, just so you know.
Okay, thank you.
Not that we were gonna say anything, but.
Oh, you never know what's new.
Certainly.
Hey Fay.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna do an experiment with having the sound turned off on Zoom here, but can I call you in your personal cell in just a minute?
I've got my personal cell and my work cell right here, so yes.
We're gonna mute it and then I'm gonna call you and ask you to say something to see if it comes through.
Okay. Yes, sir.
One TV in here that doesn't have no signal. Maybe it's. It's not paying. See if we can.
Uh, I can.
Our live.
Rainbow Run was.
What's the wifi?
City Hall.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, and then I went to yesterday to I did three.
That was nine seven oh.
It's interesting.
Do you know their wifi code? Nine seven oh.
Three seven five, five thousand.
So hopefully, we're gonna get some more snow this weekend.
That'd be nice.
Again.
That might be.
When it's not gonna go. When I I did not.
Yeah, that one keeps going out. I don't know.
I think it's.
Because I've had that one for so long.
And then I think we're going to be leaving on the twenty.
How much? And when do you think it will be?
We will.
Well, and we were getting it.
Oh, look, it came back green.
Brisk chocolate.
Freaking chocolate.
From my whole jar.
It'll be a whip, and I would tell you say that. Within a day's time. Oh, I did. Oh, no, no, don't put it next to me. I just want the dark chocolate.
Another TV dying.
I signed this. I told her to bring some bar bread.
Oh, move this away from me. Thank you. Okay.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we can be back if anything. So are we on? Are we on? Are we just doing audio or? Oh, no, for the study, we're also on, right?
I don't know if that's just the air or not.
Okay.
We'll have to ask.
Okay. And then is the I A B coming and will we go down there? Or no?
You have to ask.
You know, I um, I A B is. Oh. The I A B is gonna come if they can, but if we get off schedule. They're gonna come what? They were gonna try to show up, some of them. Okay. Either via Zoom or in person, but if we get off schedule. So it might be Zoom too. Okay, this is strange. We're in this.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, we're high.
I better not eat this when you're calling.
I know, it's kind of weird, isn't it?
It has some group of stuff.
Yeah, I found it. I don't know where we got it in my household, but I decided it would be good.
Almonds.
Almonds.
Right. What is happening?
That's a good idea.
With almonds.
Oh, you can't have peanuts. You can't have nuts.
Oh, I just don't like them in my.
She doesn't like it in any.
Also not. I'm just kidding. I'm just being a brat. I was like picking them up. Be dramatic. I'll give all my ones to.
One time I told her I liked.
We'll pass that one off.
A rocky road ice cream. She was like. How could you like Rocky Road, right?
Yeah.
Isn't it rocky?
Yeah, it was. It was used to be here.
Is everybody ready?
Yes.
Jose, are you? Is staff all ready?
We're ready to go.
All right, we're gonna start here. So hello, everyone. Welcome to the Durango City Council Studies Session of March 2nd. The time is two fifteen and our theme today is financial excellence and transparency.
Future new business and review of agendas is our first agenda topic. Do we have any future new business from any councilors?
I have a couple of things that stem from our facilitation with Suzie Fair that we had a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
Just some follow-up items that maybe we would want to do and complete. So the first one. We had received a consideration on city council work agreement from Jose or from on February 2nd. And I didn't know if we would want to discuss and maybe adopt those as part of our working agreement. Or like have a discussion about them at least, or something to that effect.
Well, I think it'd be great to have a discussion. Decide to give some support to staff.
Yeah.
What Jose was requesting.
Oh, right.
Yes.
Good point.
Absolutely. Would this be? We do have one more session that we had lined up for Suzie to kind of facilitate that discussion. I think that might be a way to just specifically just on this operational issues on some of these things to get some discussion on it. Because I think there may be some views specifically as we look at the council liaison portion that may need to have a facilitator can discuss some of those parts and get us to an agreement. That would be my suggestion, but if we wanted to do, just like if we did a work session, it would take the probably the entire time to do one. And our work session calendar is pretty packed on items. And so my thinking was I could get Melissa to kind of just find out what time we have some some time. And it may be a little bit, and that's okay, but I think it just having that out there and having that discussion would be a great thing with Suzie.
That's fine with me, but I would advocate that it would have like I want her to understand that this is something that we want like decided on and adopted and like done and not just like. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I'd want to add accountability into that.
Like, yeah, like it has to be like that has to be like an agenda item for her, not, I don't know. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know. And then there was three things around that.
On that issue, can I just request, I'm sorry, staff? I had sent some dates that I'm out.
Yeah.
And for this last one, I literally had to move a big trip. So it would, you had last time just proposed two dates really close together or something like that. I forget what it was. So if you could give us some options.
This one will definitely have more options. I think what from a staff perspective, on the last one, we were just trying to get it done before we went to the strategic plan retreat. So this one, we will have more options and kind of fill it out to see what can go work for the entire council.
That would be great. Thank you. Could I also ask that on the topic of the liaisons? Maybe if if staff have also fleshed out some of their thinking about the boards and commissions that that came out, unless you were gonna raise that, Jessica.
No, not in this.
Just as part of that working agreement where you talk about the role of liaisons, it'd be helpful to have heard from staff some of their thoughts. The role of council liaison? Yeah, so clarifying what our role is on those various words. That would be great. Yeah. I often find myself even in situations where I'm reminding them I don't vote. So that would, I think, be very helpful.
Yes. The second one is that in that facilitation, we created a list of focus questions to help focus us if a counselor gets bogged down or is veering off our agreed atmosphere, culture, and goals. And I was wondering if we could get, I don't know if this would be something for Melissa Port or if we could get staff someone to print those out and have counselors like agree to them and sign that we would like do that. I don't know if we want them like here or I just feel like it would be helpful.
And what are they?
For it was the focus questions, like if a counselor is veering off of like what we talked about, like if they're not asking, if they're leaving questions or, you know, we could help direct and like, does that make sense? And just trying to realign our standards and when is a good time to focus a question statement if asked by a counselor.
To that point, too, I think we haven't gotten the any documentation of our meeting and what we agreed to or anything yet. So that would be, I think, kind of in conjunction with that, right?
I think that's what Council Bill was actually was asking for with those documentation. Suzie did send screenshots to Mel. She was on vacation at that point, just coming back in. So as she gets those, we can put those together, have that for the council's review.
Okay. You know, and on that same topic, if I can add.
Please.
I think actually Counselor Bosman's brought it brought it up, I think in a public meeting or perhaps just to me. I do think it also would be helpful for all of us in running efficient meetings over the next several years to really have an opportunity to kind of brush up on some of these. We generally run by Robert's Rules of Orders and kind of how the, you know, motions are made, how they're moved forward. I was kind of reviewing it actually here recently, just because I, you know, I just now and then it's just good to kind of review those. And there's some various points of clarification, various ways to make motions that I think possibly at some point might be a good review if we are interested in running efficient meetings and staying on course in our meetings.
I would see if Dirk is available to to talk on the Roberts Rules of Orders, just because that's more of a process policy as you're making motions and might would have a legal aspect on that one. So not to mean to kick it over to Dirk, but I'm actually kicking it over to Dirk on his thoughts on that. Might be able to provide you more of an update on the possibilities.
And one thing I would add is that what also made me really think about that is C M L, the president of C M L, Bob Widener. He is actually a lawyer and he's been president. He's he's on his second term now as president. And he is writing a book and he is writing this book on Roberts Rules of Orders because so many communities use them. And in running efficient meetings, he is basically getting to the summary points of how, you know, running efficient meetings, staying on track, points of clarification. And he is giving it out to municipalities for free as his gift to C M L. I definitely will get one for all of us and that should be ready in June. So I'm excited for that.
Wonderful.
Thanks, Dirk. Sorry to interrupt.
No, I I'm familiar with Bob's. He he's handed out outlines for years and he calls them Bob's Rules of Order. So I don't know, some of you may have seen those, but they're sort of a simplified version. Be happy to try to do a summary of, and I think if you look in the in the Boards and Commissions manual that the Clerk's Office has put together, there's actually some kind of outlines as she calls them the cheat sheet, Robert rule cheat sheet and so forth. So it may be that we can expand on that and make those kind of more available as well.
Well, part when I got elected last year, Faye or someone Amy gave me, there was a Roberts Rules like online Zoom training that I I did. And so even something simple like that, I don't know.
And we could each also do it on our own like I am.
Yeah.
But it's very helpful. I mean, even, I mean, I've, you know, obviously been in a few meet a few of these meetings now, but even still the refreshers are good. And so I would appreciate that. And if you have any old ones from from Ms. Robert or Bob Widener, Dirk, I would love to see those before he even gets his new ones out.
I I think I have one if I have to can find it. If I can, I'll make a note and we'll circulate it.
And then one more question for you on that quickly, Dirk, not to get into this topic too much, but I'm just curious. We don't just judge. We aren't just all Roberts Rules of Orders. We just generally follow, correct?
Well, actually, the city code does provide that the meetings will be run by Roberts Rules. So we've tried to stick with them fairly closely. I mean, I think that sometimes it can get a little bit burdensome and obtuse maybe, but for the most part, I think we try to follow Roberts Rules.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the last thing around sort of that facilitation is we've been talking about meeting with specific boards and commissions recently. And I didn't know if council would support maybe a meeting with the Board of Ethics to potentially review our ethics ordinance. I feel like there's been some things that have been going on recently that our ethics board wasn't really set up for and doesn't have the tools to maybe push, I don't know, require certain things to happen. And so I just was thinking like, can we be updated on the process? What the board would like to have accomplished prior to filing, you know, the proper channels that people go, like all of those things. And if if I don't know if council thinks that that would be appropriate, I would just either say that we can have a review of the ethics ordinance or we can utilize them as our next boards and commissions meeting. I don't know, whatever.
I totally support that. And I also think that the, and I'm looking to Dirk, that the board may also have some recommendations for things that they would like
Yes.
to discuss with council.
Yes, and as a matter of fact, I think the first opportunity that we found to get on this council study session with the B O E is June. So there is a meeting set up. I think it's the first meeting in June. To so that's already on the calendar and the B O E has been working on some suggested changes, getting some suggestions from the Clerk's Office as well. So there is a plan to propose a some modifications to the code. And that will, and if you want to meet sooner than that with the Board of Ethics, then you'll need to carve out a time to do that. But again, currently we're on the calendar, I believe, for the first meeting in June.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah.
Me too.
I think that works for me, June. I mean, by the time we all get our schedules together.
Yeah, I think when the original guidelines for the Board of Ethics were set up, you know, there hadn't been any issue. It hadn't been any claims or whatever. Now there's been several. So I think that the process could use some refinement.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, Jose, are we, is the study session on video or is it just audio?
I believe that it's audio or it's Zoom for video here, but I'm not sure on the audio recording.
Just audio livestream.
Livestream.
Yeah. Just joking. Thank you. Are there any other new business or things from council? Oh, I know. Oh, yes. Allison had some new business things. That's right. You did. And I didn't know, Allison, if you needed me to raise that or you go ahead, please.
Okay.
We were.
Um, I'd like to request a couple of changes. It's Allison Baker with Public Works Director. And a couple of changes to agendas coming up tonight. We'd like to add a document to item eight point eight, request for notice of public hearing on March fifteenth, twenty twenty two to consider twelve month water rate revision that we're discussing as part of council in case you choose to move forward with something with that. And in addition, we'd like to request that the in-depth review of Lake Nighthorse Pipeline Project be removed from the three fifteen study session agenda, probably pushing that back two weeks, just because our rate discussion did go a little longer than anticipated.
I fully support that.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, great. Reminded me of something and I was gonna ask Jose another question and I, anyway, any other future agenda items? I was just gonna bring up one topic for discussion and I don't see, is Savannah here? I don't see Savannah here. And it's on the downtown visioning project and I sent an email about it and I just wanted to bring it up. I want to start by saying, first of all, that I'm really excited we're doing this project. And I've received some feedback, even some from some past counselors and just so thrilled. We're we're diving into this and we're actually making progress on it because it is, you really, you know, people are excited about the ideas for re re some reinvigoration of our downtown, some new energy. So there's, there's just really some great thoughts around it. I want to thank staff for working so hard to set up all of these community processes around it. I think we're doing a good job. There's a couple of things I wanted to just bring up on it, though. I have, despite staff's efforts, and I know they're significant attempts at outreach, I still feeling, we're still seeing some communication where we aren't, where people are just learning about it like recently. And I'm wondering if there's any other way that we can do it, because I feel like this is such an important project that we're doing. And so first question was just a, you know, kind of a, I don't know, maybe maybe even a request of council to make sure that your networks know and that you're seeking feedback and that you're, you know, of all of the people that you know, because I think it's such an important opportunity that we don't want to get to the point where we're getting a preferred design presented to council. And people are like, wait, I'm just hearing about this. We really, I really want to make sure we all make our hundred percent effort to get the word out that this is going on and that we're seeking input. I think it's really important. So that was my first thing. And if there's any other things that the city staff might think of to do, I sure would appreciate it. You know, one of the things is I don't think I've seen an article in the Herald on it, maybe. No, I I was gonna ask that same question. As a matter of fact, that's a good question. I and 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 it might be a good press release. Yeah, yeah. Anyway, just anything that we can think of to get that word out, since we've seen a few points of interest around around that and. To that point, when is the deadline on the feedback on the conceptual designs?
I would have to get back to you on that, Council. It's not on the top of my mind. Savannah Liddell, I don't think is on here and Scott Shine was not going to be able to make this meeting today.
I think it's March fifth.
I think it is.
And so if we're gonna reach out on our own list, I think we need to give them more than a cut three days' time to respond. Because I agree with you. I think that's a great idea. So.
Good point.
Yeah, so like if I sent out an email today, you know, people are gonna go, what? I I would rather do it over the weekend or something like that. So is there a way to expand that date on the?
Extend.
Yeah, extend it on the.
I'd have to check back with staff on the process that they're they're using right now and get back with you on that. I do have a note that to which I get back is to have Savannah to kind of provide a overview of the methods and uses of information that we've used. And if there's any numbers that we have and people that have participated attended to provide to the council and then any other opportunities or options that we may have to continue and broadcast the net more.
You're great. And then I think that there was potentially one more community engagement session, but then I don't really know if there is.
I don't know on the community engagement side. I do know that I believe BID is hosting about three or four series of meetings for the downtown businesses that are coming up as soon. So I know that there's that portion of it as well.
Okay. So I really appreciate that. And then as I conveyed in the email, I just want to kind of convey it one more time. I, you know, publicly and openly that I was, I'm a little bit concerned. I I absolutely value all staff's efforts and I don't mean to be questioning the expertise of staff at all. But I I'm concerned only from a process standpoint that by by restricting it to three options and a stay the same option it that potentially we aren't being as inclusive as I as as I had, I guess, potentially thought that we might be in this conceptual design phase. And I'm only concerned about that not because I have formulated any interest myself, but only because I'm concerned that by being by limiting it, it almost appears to be skewing that input that we might get. And I'm receiving some feedback from residents that are frustrated that that they don't have the option to convey what they want to through the options being presented. And so it what concerns me is that by the time we get to the end of this process by so doing that, there may be members of our community that I fear will suggest that this process was not as inclusive as we wanted it to be. And so I'm I'm nervous about that. I wanted to convey that openly and publicly. And I and and I wanted to see potentially there's, and I had asked this via email. Can we include a a hybrid option at the end? Can we include an option of submit your own input? You know, can we? Can we do any other like a ladder, like an open, more of an open, like accepting of all visionary ideas that the community might have? And some are going to be worthwhile and some aren't. But what but what I'm hearing is that right now we want this plan and we want this opportunity of conceptual design to be as visionary and creative as we can possibly be. And I am afraid that by limiting it, we might not get that creativity and openness that we're hoping through through this process.
So one thing I would say is that, and just coming from working in construction for so long, when you like submit a conceptual plan or design, like a lot of times people see that and they're like, well, that's what it's gonna look like. And it's like, whoa, no, like none of those materials, none of those, you know, like. And so I feel like if people don't understand that, they get so sucked into little things. And then I remember, I mean, I was in a meeting years ago and they were talking about our downtown. And someone had brought up like pedestrian downtown Durango or whatever. And and I don't remember who and I've been in so many meetings and I could be completely wrong now, maybe it's been redone or whatever. But they were like, there's no way that Durango's downtown main avenue can be fully pedestrian because our alleyways, like if you look at Pearl Street in Boulder, that is a pedestrian walkway or whatever. They have alleyways that are significantly bigger that can have traffic drive through there and all the things. And fire trucks, like it wouldn't work for fire, it wouldn't work for this. And so instead of letting people be visionary and submit five thousand plans that we have to go, like, we can say that is actually not an option because because of X, Y, and Z. I mean, it could be an option, but.
Well, no, that's what we are saying.
Well, well, it's not, and it isn't because of because of.
Well, and I'm not necessarily, like I said, I don't have my.
No, no, yeah, and so.
We're not even saying a block. We're not saying this. We're not. We're not giving any options. Yeah, what I what I think I'm hearing from people is there's not an option for all pedestrian, whether or not that'll work or not. Or an option for one-way traffic, because I've heard that raised as well and there's not an option. And then also for the city manager, I just wanted to say, you know, I was in a couple of towns this past summer and looking at how they handled their downtown. And Melissa, you'll know this, in Walla Walla, they blocked off side streets completely, permanently. And the way they were able to deal with it, their alley, and to your point, Jessica, in one case, the alley was sufficiently wide that they could get down for those businesses and serve them and then turn right and get out. But there could be a whole section where there were concerts and food trucks and activities on one or two side streets rather than the main avenue. And while I don't want to derail the work that's been done, to that point, I think the option of one-way traffic, I'm hearing from that, the option of no traffic with all the problems that that may or may not have, and any possibility of a possible alternative as blocking side streets. So I appreciate what everybody's saying and the inclusive idea and options that maybe don't, aren't in the included in the.
So I appreciate what everybody's saying and the inclusive idea and options that maybe don't, aren't included in the list. But one of the things I really want to make clear is I have some friends who are very astute at surveys. And this is the best survey format that the city has ever produced, according to these experts. That the way that it was presented, the way it was stepped through, the explanations of it, the visuals, even the questions were of a quality that hasn't really been produced by the city before. So I want to commend staff on that because that is how you get good information is by having good surveys. Bad surveys give you nothing, right? Good surveys can give you lots of really good information. So I just want to make sure that staff hears that. And probably your input is not a comment on the quality of the survey, it's just the concept of different options. So I just, but I want to make sure that it's not heard as, at least from me, as a criticism of the survey format. Because I was astounded at the phone calls I've received and the conversations I've had about, wow, I feel like this will give us good information and good decisions can get made based upon the survey format. So I just wanted to commend staff.
And also I, like, I know as a member, I'm a member of Bid with my businesses. And I mean, I've gotten surveys and questionnaires about this since December. Like I've been, you know, getting constant emails and they just sent out another one today about it. And so I'm not saying that we're perfect and that we're going to reach everyone. And, you know, I know a lot of business owners don't have social media and don't look at the page, like they don't like. And so it's like, if you're complaining about not getting information, where are you going to get your information? Like they also have to like take accountability.
No, and I, I absolutely agree. I'm not, definitely not criticizing, I want to make
No, I, I know.
I'm not complaining.
Sure, sure.
I'm only just trying to ensure that when we get to the conclusion of this process, that we're all not potentially thinking, maybe, you know, we, we do not want to get to the conclusion of this process, think it has to be redone or re, you know, we want to, we really feel confident that we've adequately represented the community. And that, that's just what I'm bringing forward. But if there's not community, if there's not support by council to consider that option and/or staff willingness, then I, I hear that and
I'm not, you know, and I think those are some really good points that everyone's making. I, I do think that we have to have patience with the process. We're still in the process. We don't know what that outcome could come out to. We're still meeting with different groups, bids going through. One of the things I want to be cautious of is we've already kind of started this process, gone a ways down. And then we start throwing new proposals and we'll start having people say, well, wait a minute, that's not what I was talking about. What I would envision and Savannah and Scott were here, but just looking at a process to go through with it would literally be at the end of the public hearings and gathering. Let's see what the comments are that we received. Is there anything that we think that we missed? We can always modify a process. We can always go back and say, okay, after all of this public input, maybe there was a chunk of, you know, 45% that would want us to take a look at something and, and be able to modify it. I just, I think sometimes with the public and I get it, it's a, it's a huge creative ability to do something. And we, we want to make sure we go through that process before we start thinking that we have a solution that might work. And there may be some very good reasons in regards to why those are the ones, the designs that were picked and why they were not. I think we will have an opportunity, we will have an opportunity to come back to the council, talk about the input that we received, have the experts discuss, here's why we looked at it, here's why some of these things wouldn't work. Where here's why, you know what, we didn't even think about that and now we would like to go back and go through it. And, you know, kind of close that community loop and then see if we need to gather more, if there's something we found within that that we need to go back and visit. I would just, you know, kind of go on that part, because I think if we start adding new things to this process, we'll end up having to go back and make sure that everybody understood that that process was going. My, as your city manager, just my, my thoughts as we go to public processes and allowing just to have a little bit of patience and knowing that we're not going to rush to a decision on this. I couldn't imagine that we would, especially even as a council, that we would say, okay, this is it, we're going to go, that we're going to go through, we're going to find feedback and we're going to want to get this right. And make sure that that's there.
Very much. And you bring up a really, really good point, but I was concerned about how you change it and go back. So, so having patience, I actually agree with that. And then, and it may be at the conclusion, if you're right, that we see, I see that the individuals who wanted other options are very, very small minority and not represented, in which case would indicate that we're going in the right direction. So I appreciate that. And I'll try to have patience, but I did want to bring it up. And actually even honestly, for the record, you know, suggests that I'm bringing that forth, because I, it is a concern I have. But I hope it is not right and doesn't come to fruition and that, and then there's a clear, it would be fabulous if the, if we did have a clear majority, you know?
Absolutely. And even if, you know, I think the good part about it is having that conversation with staff and letting us know, hey, here's what we're hearing. Because that's part of the public input process as well. And if we do get to the part of where it ends up being a majority or there's, you know, maybe a, a design reason why it just can't happen, we can have that explanation and have those comments and it really helps you be prepared to make a best decision of getting that feedback back. So feedback back, give it that feedback.
Interesting, one thing I would just, I just want to bring up what Mayor Protime Noseworthy was suggesting though, and I hadn't received that feedback, but I think it's very good feedback about the one-way. So like, it, it's interesting though, I just wanted to throw it out there in that scenario with one-way. Like I said, I haven't received that, but it's valid. By not having it as an option, are people really? You know what I mean? Are, are they like, not thinking about it right, not seeing it as an option?
Yeah.
So I mean, I just, and I guess that's going to be in any system, you know, but, but
I would say, I think that's why we have that community input. If somebody brings up one-way, you know, like, oh, that's a good point. And either as they go through that, the, the designers or the staff looks at it and says, okay, one-way was something that we heard about. And they're able to say either why we didn't consider it or why we could consider it. But part of that is getting through that conversation and getting through those comments. You, you usually put out a few designs so people can understand this is what we think can work. And then you do start getting some of those comments. It's going to be very hard, I think, in any process to capture every possible possibility that could go there. And, and we do hope that the communication that comes through from the citizens may point out something or business owners that we did not think about, that we can always re-go back and reincorporate or at least be prepared to answer that question of, A, why it might be an option or why it may not be an option.
So I, I think the one-way is a really interesting idea. In this conversation also, what I'm hearing is that we, you know, as with all things, we prefer to have the ideas out there early and vet them well. Because if it all comes to council at a point and, and those ideas haven't been vetted, then it's our job as representatives of the community to make sure that those ideas do get vetted. And so we don't want to, we don't want the process to go to, you know, next to the endpoint. And then all of a sudden, now they have to go back and vet process, vet ideas. So I think that's also part of the reason why we're bringing these up. And I think it's, it's reasonable to do so and at least have staff say, yes, this has been considered and here's the situation. Or, oh, you know what, you're right, we need to add that in as an idea, as a concept and do some evaluation of that too.
Yeah, and I, absolutely, you're correct. And I think that there's a part at the end of the public participation that staff reviews back and gets all of the comments that they've received and decides, okay, is there something we missed? Is there a concept maybe we need to add based on the, the feedback that we received? And make that decision before coming back to the council. So I don't think it's a, a part of where in that, in that process that staff just says, okay, this is it, we're going to move forward. I think it gives you a time to pause after you've completed it all and say, okay, is there anything out here that's new that we didn't consider? Is there any feedback that we received that we didn't know was going to come? And decide, okay, maybe we find that these are the two top options or this option and an option that came out of, that we didn't get. And then we may go back and extend that community engagement based on that portion of it. So I think where, what you're asking for is, is definitely reasonable. And I think that's a staff role to see at the end of this process, do we believe we got everything that we needed and we could answer and provide a solid recommendation to the council? Or do we think that based on the comments that we received from the public, emails from the council, that there's some options out there that we need to get more information on before presenting that to the council?
Great. Thank you so much.
Excellent.
And the questionnaire does close on the fourth.
The fourth or fifth?
Fourth. It's March 4th, online questionnaire.
Maybe we can extend that.
It would be great to extend it.
Yeah.
I will see, just see kind of where we're at on that process.
And if we can, maybe get the, or get Tom to reach out to the Herald.
Tom just sent an email out and it looks like there was a Herald article on January 4th, 2022.
Okay, so that was two months ago. So maybe it's time for another one, because the
With things closing, just a little reminder.
Maybe with some visuals.
Maybe with some visual designs that might pique some interest.
Good idea.
Yep.
A picture speaks a thousand words. So if we could get, yeah, at, at one of those design options potentially, or if they even, I don't know if they could actually do an article with all of them, but I think it would be really interesting.
And I would like to say, Jessica, to your point, I would be interested even right off the bat, not making work for staff, but if they ruled out the pedestrian as an option for reasons of the alleys or for safety, I would love to hear that right off the bat. So I'm aware of it and have that thinking in mind when I chat with other people.
And obviously anything is possible, but the amount of money and time it would be to like extend alleyways, like you're like, okay, that's probably not going, going to happen.
So we're putting money into the alleys, downtown, the commercial alleys to fix them as best we can, but they are not conducive to good delivery systems. Yeah, I think of Maria's bookshop for one, and it hasn't anything to do with the alley. It's the fact that in order to get deliveries, having worked there, you go out the back door, which is an entire flight of stairs up to the road. And you think about carrying boxes and boxes of books up and down those stairs in a snowstorm. It's not a good thing.
So what they were talking about in this meeting I was at, I remember is that like you, if you have a delivery truck that can't go on Main, right? And now it's in the alleyway, but you have traffic that can't go on Main and is now traveling through the alleyway, like how does that, it doesn't work?
Yeah, it's a tough one for us.
Anyways, so.
So how do we feel like we've communicated well on that topic?
But the point you're bringing up though is to have answers as to why. And again, doesn't necessarily, none of these options need to be all or nothing. They can be hybrid, they can be certain, you know? So anyway, and I, I would love that communication such that to, throughout the process, as we receive input, we can provide that back.
And one more thing on the extension, if we could know today or tomorrow, because I don't want to send out a request to people to fill it out if they're only going to get one day to do so. I don't think that's fair. So if we're going to get an extension, I'm happy to do that. So, and I'd like to do that, so.
I'm going to just add one more thing along that. The bump outs, will they be starting in the middle of March?
We'll get back with you on that.
I think, yeah, it depends on the weather and everything, but I, I think the intent is to start. So again, we'll have this conversation the same time people are looking at the changing area of downtown.
So thank you for listening and letting me bring that up and communicating with me about it. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Do we have any other future agenda or new business items?
No.
Something that I just noticed when Allison was standing there, it's been bothering me for years. Not Allison. The computer monitor is actually in the way of seeing people who are standing at the podium and them having eye contact with like, especially the people sitting over here. And I'm just wondering if there is, when people are standing at the podium talking, if there isn't something we could do to accommodate that. I feel, I feel rude actually, because I can't see them sometimes. Shorter, yeah, exactly. Thank you. All righty, so on to our next item, which is information-only items, multi-year health insurance strategy with Erin Heider.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council, Erin Heider, Managing Director of Internal and Cultural Services. I kind of like hiding behind the screen, but I'll scoot over
I can see you.
For everybody. So since I've joined the organization, healthcare cost management and strategy has been a key focal area for us. So much so, mid-2021, we chose to switch our healthcare benefit broker relationship with Gallagher Benefit Services primarily to drive new strategies and to, to address cost and healthcare plan design for our employees. This work, our intention with this work is to have a balanced approach to meet our need to mitigate the ever increase in costs associated with healthcare coverage while maintaining competitive benefits for our employees. Healthcare benefits are only one part of our total compensation package. Acknowledging this, I just want to note that the team is also working on finalizing some benchmark data related to wages from, and how our pay plan benchmarks across other organizations. We don't have that information to present today. However, when it is ready, as we anticipate it to be finalized soon, we will provide that update also as it does complement the benefits piece of this conversation. So with that, today, we do have an informational presentation that's intended to provide council with an overview of our current plan and an update to the varying strategies that we are analyzing and assessing as we move into a multi-year approach to address those items that I mentioned. With that, I'd like to introduce Katie Roth, Account Executive with Gallagher Benefit Services. She's going to lead us through the presentation today and also is here to answer any questions.
Thanks. Good afternoon, I'm Katie Roth from Gallagher Benefit Services, as Erin mentioned. She's going to pull me up and here we go. So feel free to stop me, ask any questions at any time. You can ask them at the end, you can ask them as we go through. Thank you very much. As Erin mentioned, we started working with the city about September of last year and went ahead and went through the open enrollment. So I'm going to take you today through kind of the historical, the last five years of the city benefits, what they've been like, what they look like. We're going to talk about what they're looking like currently. I'm going to show you some benchmarking. I'm going to caveat benchmarking by saying specifically that it cannot be looked at in a box. And I'll talk about why as we get there, because we're going to go through a lot of different pieces of it. And then we're going to talk about future strategies. So obviously I'm tall, you can see me very easily over this, so. But ask me any questions as we go through it. I'm happy to make it a discussion and we'll talk about kind of what we're going through. So as you can see right now on the screen, this is going to show you in, from 2018 all the way to present, what the medical increases have been for the city's plan. So I'm going to remind you that the plan is self-funded. And what self-funded means is that the costs are directly tied to the city. So you know that they are hitting the city budget every time you're paying a medical claim. And we'll dive into that in a little bit. But you can see, starting in 2018, on the total side, you will see that was the overall medical increase that was taken in 2018. Of that, the employer costs went up, so the city costs went up by 13.3% and the employee costs went up by 5.6%. So I'm going to point out just a couple of things without going line by line. You can see in 2019 that it looks like the employees absorbed a ginormous increase, right? It shows almost 42%, which appears shocking. But when you look at it, employees were paying $15.17 per month for healthcare in 2018 and it increased to 43.33. So although we saw an increase of 2.8%, we really didn't talk about a lot of dollars overall. And I'll show you in benchmarking how that stands up to different peers as we go through it. Family contributions during 2019 increased from just under $100 to $128. So although it looks like employees absorbed a lot, we're talking about not a lot of dollars at that time. Then we can see 2020 and 2021, the entire increases were absorbed by the city during that time. And employees remained flat. So I think that was an intended COVID, to be honest, of why you did not push any increases on to employees during that timeframe. In 2022, you can see that it was a 6.4% increase overall. So this was just for January 1st. The city took 4.4% increase on their budget and the employees took 36.7% increase on that. Couple of things I want to mention there, we did what we call un-grandfathered you. So when the Affordable Care Act first came into effect, most plans were un-grandfathered at that time. If they were not un-grandfathered then, they were able to push off certain impacts of the Affordable Care Act and postpone them for future years. So things like covering preventive care at 100%, covering experimental medication, things like that. And there were provisions that you had to hold on to and, and tie up to be able to keep that. In 2022, we un-grandfathered you. And if you're wondering why, the answer is the benefit for being grandfathered really wasn't there anymore as it had been in the past. So what happened is, is the government looked forward and said, every year we're going to remove certain protections. And now there's almost no protections to be grandfathered. So we un-grandfathered you in 2022. We also moved you to what we call four-tier rates. We also moved you to what we call four-tier rates. So previously, you were on a two-tier rating, which meant I either had employee only or I had family coverage. We moved to four tiers. So you went to employee only, employee spouse, employee plus child and children, and employee plus family. And the reason that people do that is because if you think about it, if I only cover one child in 2021, I would have paid for full family coverage, which is the same as somebody who maybe covers a spouse and five children. So it can really adversely hurt a single parent out there or somebody who just covers a spouse. Now that we've moved to four-tier rates, it allows people to actually pay better associated with who they're covering. So the final thing I want to point out on this slide is that you were at a, what I call a 92%, 8% split. That means the city overall covered 92% of the cost and employees covered 8% of the total cost. In 2022, we moved you to 94% covered by the city and 6% covered specifically by employees. Questions on this slide before I move on? All right, so now I want to take a step back and talk about what your current benefits are. So the first thing I pointed out is that you are self-funded. And you are self-funded using Meritaine, who is a third-party administrator. So what you are doing is you are paying Meritaine as the city to process your claims. That is exactly what you're doing. This money comes out of your bank account, but they're the ones actually reviewing the codes and paying the claims on your behalf and then turning around and charging you. You're using the Aetna network through Meritaine. So Meritaine is administering the network as well. The reason it is good to be self-funded, and I would call it a positive, is because you can carve out different aspects of your plan. So when I think about that, your prescription drugs are carved out of your plan. They are through WellDyne. And we're going to talk about in future years, the strategy for that. But it allows you to get better costs and higher discounts when it comes to purchasing medications. So that's a very good thing, and the city has been self-funded for several years. And our plan would be to continue that way. You have benefited through that. That means the city absorbs the entire cost up to what we call a stop-loss level. A stop-loss level is essentially reinsurance. It protects the city from million-dollar claims. If a million-dollar claim came in on one person, we wouldn't want to hurt your budget by you turning to have a write check for a million dollars to pay that claim. So we reinsure every claim over $100,000. And that was increased from $75,000 in 2021. And the reason that we increased that is it decreases your fixed cost. So it puts an additional $25,000 of liability on every person or claim that every claimant that you absorb, but you're paying less in guaranteed costs. So we were able to save you some money by doing that. In addition, you carry what we call aggregate stop-loss. Aggregate stop-loss says if the entire plan runs poorly, but it doesn't hit above the individual stop-loss on one person, if it hits above a 25% threshold, you are protected there as well. So it's really two ways of protecting. We're protecting the entire plan as a whole and we're protecting single claim members as well. So we also added transplant coverage for 2022. So this is actually a great thing. We were able to save you more money on your stop-loss coverage in premiums than the cost of the transplant coverage. So it was absolutely a win for the city. Transplant coverage means that if you have an employee or a member that needs a transplant, it is completely carved out of your plan and paid for by a third-party policy. So that's very important because as I show in this slide, the average cost of a transplant today is about $700,000. And that assumes that it takes the first time. So when you think about that, if the transplant doesn't take or even one transplant, you're going to pay for that increased stop-loss rates over many years to come. But by carving that out, we're moving that risk out of the plan. So just to think about for the future, there's a lot of changes coming of things that are very expensive. So we expect in the next few years, there to be an option to potentially carve out gene therapy drugs. So that's another thing that's incredibly expensive and can really hurt a plan. So I wouldn't be surprised if in the next few years, we see carve-out options for that and we'll bring it to your attention when that happens. I mentioned about moving from a two-tier to a four-tier contribution. We also added an enrollment system for the city. So what that means is that employees could go online and actually do their enrollments versus having to do them via paper in the past. So good option there. And then also, we added enrollment counselors to answer employees' questions this year for open enrollment. Any questions on the current benefits? Okay, so this is just a recap of what your plan currently looks like before we go into the benchmarking. So you can see the plan has in and out of network benefits. The majority of claims are going to be done in-network. You can see that the most commonly utilized services apply a copay, so a deductible does not apply. So think of that like office visits, urgent care, emergency room, and prescription drugs. So those are the most common things that people utilize. They're going to pay a copay for those and not be subject to the deductible. Once we get into more expensive services like inpatient hospitalization, outpatient surgery, then the deductible is going to apply. It's covered at 80% after the deductible. The employee pays 20%. However, there is an out-of-pocket maximum. So the maximum amount that any individual, including their deductible, can pay out of pocket is $2,000 over the course of the year. Yes.
Is that chart based on the two-tier system or will it be, or will it change with the four-tier system?
It does not change. So the benefits remain the same. The only change was the actual contributions. So, great question. So if I'm a family, the maximum I can pay out of pocket for my entire family, regardless of family members, is 6,000. Great question. And then out-of-network benefits are designed to be less rich because if employees go out of network, it costs both the city more and it costs the employee more out of their pocket. Any questions on current benefits? All right, so now we're going to show you some benchmarking. And as I mentioned, it's really hard to look at benchmarking in a vacuum because as you can see, the benchmarking is that we're showing you here is eight different employers specifically in your area, okay? Out of those eight employers, six of them are public employers, two of them are private employers. That was done intentionally because when the city hires like an accountant or an IT person or many different jobs within the city, you may seek them from private sector and not always public sector. So we believe that it's important to compete with both public and private in the same area that you're in. So a couple of notes on this. There is employer number two runs on a 7-1 plan year. So you run on a 1-1 currently, meaning you renew every 1-1. Employer two renews on 7-1. And then employer five renews on a 5-1 plan year as well. So it kind of gives you a map. And employer eight, I apologize, is a 7-1 plan year as well. Employers three and five are both private sector. The rest are public sector. The reason you see many of them duplicated is because we're looking at their PPO plans. And so, for example, employer four offers four different PPO plans. So you're going to see them duplicated four times with four different deductibles. And so obviously, you are all the way to the left next to employer one. So right now, we are looking at the deductible. So these are going to be in-network deductibles per plan. So you can, it gives you an idea that compared to your peers, with the exception being what employer six offers is one of their plan options, you do exceed your peers, meaning that you have the lowest or very low deductible comparatively. So your plan is very rich. Now, we're going to look at what your out-of-pocket limits are. So I explained that an out-of-pocket maximum is the maximum amount a single person can pay out of pocket or a family in the orange part. So blue is single, orange is family. And this would be the maximum a year. So you can see right here compared to your peers, really where you stand. I would call you really better than all and really other than the employer six plan they offer, the very first one that they're offering on employer six to the left, that one is slightly richer than you. Other than that, you do run richer than your peers. So I hope we use this for recruiting and retention, by the way, as we're showing this. So now we're going to look at your monthly premium contributions. So in blue is what the employees pay for employee-only coverage. And green is what the employer pays for employee-only coverage. The reason these vary so much is because you have to think about the fact that the different plans cost different amounts, right? So the amount that your plan costs is different than what the county plan costs or what the school district's plan costs or what some private employers are. But this gives you an idea as a whole, what employees are paying in the blue compared to what the employers are paying as well in the green. Any questions on this benchmarking? And then now we're going to see, look at the same thing for family coverage. So this is really where you far exceed your peers here. You're going to see that your cost of family coverage is under $100 for a family per month. And then you can look, for example, employer two or employer one is right at $1,000 of employee contribution. So there's a significant difference between yours and what employer one is. You can see employer two obviously has two plans, one slightly under $1,000 for family coverage and one slightly higher. Another comment to point out here, if you look at employer six, they're showing three plans here. Notice that the employer contribution is almost exactly equal between the plans. The reason for that is that when you offer multiple plan options, they have what we call a defined contribution approach. So you offer one plan right now. I can either opt in or opt out. In the future, if you wanted to offer multiple plans, what we would look at is essentially that city's contribution is the same. You're not incenting anyone into either plan. And then the employee makes the choice. So think of it as a buy-up approach. So I can take this plan or I can buy up with my own dollars and make a choice. And that's what you're seeing with employer six here. Their contribution remains flat regardless of the plan. Employer eight indicates the exact same way. The employee amount varies, however, the employer is flat. Questions on here? Okay, so on plans offered, so out of the nine employers that we benchmarked, there was 24 total plans offered out of nine employers. Two, you are one of these, offer one plan. Two offer two plans. Three offer three plans. And then two offer four or more plans. In my experience, four plans is excessive. I would not recommend ever offering four plans. I compare it to taking a child to the cereal aisle in the grocery store and asking them to make a choice. It's just difficult. So just something to consider. I'm a fan of choice. Too much choice can be a bad thing. So also to point out, 11 of the plans offered are PPO plans, exactly what your plan is today. So in and out of network benefits. Three of them are HMO plans, so that's going to be in-network only coverage. The only out-of-network coverage would be available for an emergency, so a more restrictive plan. Eight of them are high-deductible health plans that are health savings account compatible. In our experience, we are absolutely seeing more choice by adding in a high-deductible plan. I'll tell you, a lot of the reasons are because it's a good retirement vehicle. It's an additional retirement vehicle and it's a pre-tax savings vehicle. So it's not for everyone, but it is a choice to consider going forward. And then two of them are point-of-service plans. That's a PPO plan that requires a referral. And one is an EPO, which is very similar to an HMO, so to give you a perspective. The final benchmarking that I want to show you is that Gallagher has the largest national benchmarking survey when it comes to benefits in the U.S. So what we're showing you here is in green, I'm sorry, in blue is the city's benefits. So anytime that you're going to see a blue bar, we are looking at the city's plan. If we look at a green bar, this is our custom benchmarking. So this is public sector only for the West and South regions. So Colorado is actually considered in the South region. And however, so we have to pull in the South region. But you're going to get in here, you're going to get Texas, you're going to get Oklahoma, New Mexico, Arizona, and you're going to go all the way west to California. So it gives you an idea of what others are doing as well, once we expand it. So and then the orange is our entire benchmarking survey with just under 4,000 respondents. So to give you an idea of what you're looking at. But you can see when we look at your individual premium share, 5% is what employees are paying. And then family right below it is at 6%. So comparing to peers here. Individual deductible is $400 and you can see where your averages run across. And then the same thing on out-of-pocket maximums. So I think the takeaway from this is that I'm not saying right now that I think you have to make some dire change to your benefits. I think it's good to be aware of this. I think it's great to use for recruiting purposes. I mean, you do far exceed in every category I've shown you here. So I think it is worth using that at least to your advantage and communicating things like that. Questions before I go into future strategies?
If you were categorizing these in like the bronze, silver, gold, platinum, however it goes, where would you put ours then?
You are in the platinum.
I've often used that phrase. It's a platinum benefit package.
You are in the high-platinum package.
High-platinum. Is there anything beyond high-platinum?
No, no, there is not.
Plutonium or something like that?
No, yeah, you're right. No, that's a great point. So when the Affordable Care Act came in, that's where the metallic levels came in. So they said you have either a platinum, a gold, a silver, or a bronze plan. Your plan is a platinum plan. I would say most days, we see gold and silver plans and a few platinum. You clearly have a platinum plan, so I'd be proud of it. I mean, I think it's a great, it's a great plan. And just something that you should all be proud of. Any other questions?
I just think it's very important to put a dollar value with that benefit package. And the previous numbers that I saw around like $20,000 was not probably on, I know my own benefit of what I was surprised at how little I would be charged and what would be covered. And if I had to buy it on the market, it would be exceedingly expensive.
You're exactly, I think you hit the nail on the head. If I was ballparking, I could go back and look at the numbers, but if I was ballparking you, you are in the probably over average, well over $15,000 you all pay per year.
Oh, no, more than that.
Yeah, no, I agree, but I'm saying once, yeah, it's incredibly high what you cover for them as well. And that doesn't even, you know, put into the pieces. I mean, that's truly what you're paying and then they have their out-of-pocket costs on top of that, but are very, very low. So agree, far exceeds your peers. Great questions. So let's talk about future strategies. So as I mentioned, I'm not here to be like the bearer of bad news and say, your benefits are so great, we have to come out and change them. That's not what, where my goal is at all. Like, please don't take me out to the street, you know, and hang me. So I got you, right? So your benefits are incredibly rich. I think it's part of a total rewards puzzle. And I think we always talk about this and we talk about public sector because you have to weigh pay, you have to weigh retirement, and you have to weigh benefits. And one of them is going to be great, and one of them may not be in the 90th percentile, and that's what it's all about. So it's all pieces of a puzzle and we're just here to help you with one piece of that puzzle, which happens to be the benefits piece. So as Erin mentioned, you know, the compensation piece comes into it and we are one piece of that puzzle. I do think something that we have to talk about is what we call adverse selection in this industry. And adverse selection comes into effect when your benefits are so rich that people will not go elsewhere. And I don't mean elsewhere for employment. And I don't mean elsewhere for employment, I mean elsewhere for their dependents. So think about it this way. You're employing, you're employing employee one, and that employee has a spouse. That spouse is employed elsewhere and offered benefits. But is there a point where your benefits are so rich that that spouse will not take their benefits through their employer, and they're going to come to yours? And that's a philosophical thing we need to think about going forward, is should you bear that cost, or should their employer potentially bear some of that cost as their employee? So that's something in the future that we want to take into consideration, is adverse selection. It may, you know, another thing to think about is if you have any sort of a health condition, this is an amazing plan to be on. I have maxed my out-of-pocket costs as an individual at $2,000. So I want to be on this plan. So do we need to just keep that in mind as we go forward? And we want to look at the long-term success of the city, the plan, and the employees, and weigh those all together. Because I don't want to come back to you and say, now you're spending 30, $35,000, and we get to a point where it's just not sustainable. So we'll work with you regarding balancing of that. Some option to weigh on the adverse selection is potentially a spousal surcharge. So what a spousal surcharge says is if I have a spouse that I'm covering on the city's plan, and they are offered coverage through another employer and they decline it, then they potentially, I pay an additional amount to cover. It helps you as the city to potentially get back some of the costs that you may be paying out on someone else. That could be their employer's responsibility. If the spouse has no other coverage, it would not apply. We'll continue to monitor your prescription drug costs. Your current prescription drug contract ends in 2023. We will go to bat to negotiate higher rebates for you. So what that means is that every time when we watch those commercials and we see all the expensive drugs, you know, the Humeras and everything that's out there, those manufacturers pay back rebates every time one of those drugs is purchased. And the logical way that we think about this is that if you're paying for that medication for that employee, the city should get the rebate associated with it back. So we're always going to work to advocate for you to get the maximum amount of rebates back, which helps your plan. The other thing is, is, I mentioned this earlier, is talking about potentially offering a second plan option. Sometimes one size doesn't fit all. And so that's something in future years that we'll want to bring up to you and see if you're open to maybe adding in a second plan option for employees, you know, depending on your population. Some of that comes with surveys. I know we talked about surveys earlier today, but talks about surveys and see what employees really like. And are they interested in an HSA plan? And part of that may be you putting a contribution towards their HSA, because the plan is so much less expensive. So just comments to think about in the future, in future there. Peak Health Alliance. So I think you are aware of Peak Health Alliance. Summit County Government is actually a client out of our office, and they were one of the first adapters of Peak Health Alliance. So we're very, very familiar. We will keep the pulse on Peak Health Alliance. When it comes to your next renewal, we will look at Peak Health Alliance absolutely as an option for you. I think Peak has really, really good solutions. I think it is a piece of the puzzle. As I mentioned, it may not be the be-all, end-all. I think it's worth exploring and seeing if it is a fit for the city. So I think that's important. I also want to mention that Peak does two different things. They offer individual health plans to people who live in your city and may be either underinsured or not insured at all and need health coverage, and then they offer group health plans. Peak can solve this one way in your area without solving both ways, and they can solve both ways. So just keep that in mind, as the same thing in Summit County, and as they went into Garfield County as well. It can still be really wonderful for your, for the people who live in your community, even if it's not a fit for the city. And I'm not saying it's not going to be, because it very well may be a fit for the city, but we're committed to looking at it. To me, there's two pieces that will come into play when we look at Peak Health Alliance. One of the pieces will be the discounts that Peak has negotiated with providers in your area. So what is the differential between what Aetna has negotiated that you're using now and what Peak has been able to negotiate under that? And weighing that amount versus the cost to use Peak versus the cost you're paying to use Aetna. Essentially, that is what it comes down to when we look at it. The second piece that will be important as we look through this is when we look at all of the providers and facilities that your employees and members are using, how well do they line up with Peaks? So for example, if 90% of the facilities and providers that employees are using are already Peak providers, it becomes a lot easier of an answer. If the answer's 30, and we're going to be penalizing 70%, it's going to be a different answer, right? So we will come back and weigh all of those things when it comes to renewal and show you the data along with it, because it'll be important for you to make a decision. The final piece is, we're looking at moving your renewal date to July, to a mid-year renewal date of 2023, which allows people to have a little more time in education versus trying to do it at the end of the year when you're coming into budget time. Questions for me?
I do have.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Erin, help me out. Do we spend about $7 million right now on our healthcare?
That's correct.
So if we went with two plans, and if we followed what the other businesses, regional or local businesses are doing, we would offer pretty much a set amount. This is how much the city will pay toward your insurance, either or. And you could probably get silver with a lower fees or platinum, but you're paying for it. But then the question is, what kind of reduction in costs could you estimate that that might provide for the city? And I'm not necessarily going to hold it to you.
Yeah, don't hold me to it, I'm on record.
Could you envision, I don't know, 10%, 20% reduction in costs?
My answer was going to be somewhere around 12 to 17.
12 to 17.
That's just.
That's significant.
Yeah, it would depend on a couple things. So first, I realized that we wouldn't want to rip the Band-Aid off, as the expression says, because you can't afford to do that. I mean, we can't have a mass exit. So I think it's a couple of things. I think it's, you know, moving contributions up on your rich plan that you have currently. We're going to have to get there. You know, I've shown you, I've shown you the data behind it. I think you offer a very rich, potentially high-deductible health plan, and you incent into that by putting a HSA, a health savings account contribution. A creative way to do that is to make it a match, so you're encouraging employees to contribute while you're also making contribution, thus being able to put, keep those plans not too far off. Because if I'm sitting in a $400 deductible plan right now, and you show me a $3,000, I'm not going, right? But if I show you potentially a $600, $700 deductible plan, and then I show you a $1,500, and I'm going to incent the HSA in the $1,500, now it's getting better. Because if I'm a slow utilizer of healthcare, under your current plan, I'm overinsured.
Yeah.
We would all say that, right? I'm overinsured. And if I'm a slower utilizer of healthcare, would I rather have you put money in an HSA that I can use in the future and therefore provide me, I pay less, and I've got a nest egg to go into the future? So if you think about it this way, if we're spending $20,000 a year on healthcare, remember, all the savings is directly driven back to you, because you're self-funded. So we have an incentive, if we're overinsuring people, to stop overinsuring them, because you see the direct savings. I think that's some great questions when we think about it. But I think you could get to, you know, 12 to 17%, and as you all know, that's more money you can invest elsewhere. And if we're overinsuring people, we may be doing them a bit of a disservice. Or you have it as a double offering, so people who need it and want it get it, but others maybe don't.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Yeah, thanks.
Seems like you did a great job with this, and I really appreciate it. It's very interesting.
Thank you. Like geek out over this stuff as I, as I tell my family.
I can hear that.
Can you tell?
And I appreciate that more than I can tell you.
Thank you. Thank you. No other questions?
Just a comment, it sure is nice to know how, that we are in a platinum plan, and it is a big benefit for our employees.
It is.
And I believe that they know that, don't you think so? I'm looking at you, Erin.
Well, I would add, I think we're getting indication that we know that our health plan offerings are valued through our recent employee survey, and that initial visibility we have into that response and that. I think the other piece is, we have an intention to make sure that everyone is more aware of their total compensation and total rewards. One of our primary work plan items for the HR team is to distribute total reward statements to all of our employees, and I think we're targeting March. I know the city has done that, did it before. There's been a brief stoppage of doing that, but we're going to restart that here. So we, it is an important piece of that communication.
And I'd like to say, I think it's, I know the mayor and I, Mayor has raised this at other points too. You know, if I had to buy this on my healthcare insurance that I pay, I think it would be close to $4,000 a month, if I had to buy it on the market. So that's not 20,000. You may be paying 20,000, the city, but the benefit, if I had to buy it on the market, could be, you know, significant amount of money.
You cannot purchase your healthcare on the market. So the richest plan available on the market is a gold plan. They don't even offer platinum-level plans on the marketplace, because it's a risk for an insurance company. The other, so I want to point that out as well, that you can't even, even if I tried to go buy this insurance, I couldn't. The other thing I'm going to point out is that when you go to purchase on the open marketplace, if I'm a health insurer and I'm fully insured, so I'm absorbing the risk of whatever people buy on the open marketplace, I know that healthy people don't buy on the open market. It's expensive. Like, you just made the perfect comment, which was, if I went out there and looked, it's very expensive. So the other thing they do, that's the number one reason they don't offer platinum plans, because it's a huge risk to them. The other thing is they restrict the networks entirely on the open market. So you run on a national network, the Aetna network is national, meaning I can go to New York City and see an Aetna doctor, and go to California and see an Aetna doctor, right? They don't even offer it on the open market. So that makes you even higher above than what's even offered there. But you're right, if you were to try and offer something, like if I was going to cost it out based on what I know, you'd probably be close to $50,000 a year on, if you could purchase it, which you can't even do. So, great point there.
But yeah, I just think the point being is that it's one thing, this is how much we pay for our employees. It's another thing of the real value is significantly higher. One, you can't even get it. And so I think in recruiting that also, and retaining, that point needs to be delineated.
Absolutely. Nope, you're, and as Erin mentioned, now that we've started working with you, our goal is really to partner with the city to get the message out. So there's a lot of benefits, you know, I geek out over this. We talked mostly about medical, and we talk about dental and vision, you know, geek out about that. But you know, there's a lot of benefits that, that people don't utilize, like employee assistance program. And how do we make sure that people understand those? You know, long-term disability is another thing, that people don't realize in life insurance, as a matter of fact, until they need it. And so our job is really to, you know, work with, work with the team here to make sure that people understand that, yeah, you're paying for their medical, you're paying for that, dental and vision, but you're also paying for life insurance on them. You're also paying for long-term disability. You're, you know, you're also paying for an employee assistance program, and all of those round out the total rewards package. So really to echo what Erin said, we see so much value in total reward statements, because, you know, and I'm guilty of this, I go home at the end of the day and I think about what I take home in my paycheck. I don't think about the contribution my employer makes to my retirement, you know, or my stack purchase plan, or I don't, you know, I just don't think about those things, and my benefits, of course. And it's really important to round out the whole package, so.
And I think to Mayor Protem knows where this point, the total rewards do need to include that, you know, if you had to go out on the open market to purchase your own insurance versus what it costs the city. So I think that that's a very valid, valid point to make. I know it was huge for me to make the shift.
It's a retention, it's a huge retention piece, just when you think about it. Any other questions? All right, well, thank you for letting me speak to you today, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ended up exactly on time. Awesome.
Mayor and council, if I can just provide a couple quick updates on the downtown visioning. So I was just talking with Scott as we were kind of going through, he was actually in another meeting. First of all, they were already looking to extend the input, just because of the input that they've gotten, at least another week. He's going to get me the date by the end of the day. And then secondly, they were planning to give a full update to the council on our next council meeting. So that'll be able to at least not go to where you're going to make a decision, but just kind of talk a little bit of where they're at in the process, what they've learned. I think a lot of the things that you're bringing will be getting answered here rather shortly.
Wonderful. Excellent, thanks. So now we're on to direction needed section, and internal controls discussion with Ms. Need, please.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilors. Cynthia Sneed, Finance Director, for those who don't know me. First of all, let me check that our Ida Bailey Partners are promoted to panelists. Okay, we're all there. Okay. The Financial Services Department has been quite busy for the last couple of years, as you're well aware. So in addition to our regular day-to-day activities, the department adapted to the constraints of conducting business under COVID. We pumped out over $900,000 in CARES business relief funding, and over $12,000 to the local businesses in delivery fee reimbursement, as well as administering the utility relief program. Layered on top of that, of these programs, the new Open Gov system was implemented. But the most rigorous thing of all, was navigating through the fallout of the fraudulent activity. In just over a year's time, the department went through two standard year-end audits, and two fraud-related forensic audits. So I'm pleased, very grateful to be able to bring the final chapter, so we can put all of this behind us. So as mentioned in last week's strategic plan retreat, the Finance Department has come a long way in the last couple of years, and we embrace that continuous improvement. So this afternoon, we've got representatives from the city's audit firm, Ida Bailey. They are here to present the results of the internal control examination that they conducted. I would like to note that nearly all of the items in the report that you got have already been fully implemented or are in progress. So with that, I would like to introduce our Ida Bailey Partners, Kim Higgins, Paul Kane, and Doug Cash, who will walk you through the final report.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Thank you for having us today. I'm Kim Higgins, and one of your engagement partners on the financial statement and compliance audits that Cynthia mentioned since 2019, and have also been involved in the other engagements that Ida Bailey has performed for the city. Doug Cash is also with us today. He'll be presenting the actual internal controls engagement report. And Paul Kane is also with us today as your 2021 engagement partner for the 2021 financial statement and compliance audit. So I'm going to just start with giving a little background of how we got here from an Ida Bailey standpoint, and just to say, yes, we are here to present the internal control engagement report. But, but we actually got here, and several of you on the council will remember, that we were hired to perform the 2019 financial statement and compliance audits, and the fraud happened, and we then were engaged to help with and perform a forensics engagement along with the CBI involvement and the other activities that was going on surrounding that. And during that time period, council also thought that internal controls should be looked at, and staff could be helped by taking a look at that and providing recommendations to strengthen those internal controls, so that you could move positively forward from a financial statement standpoint. And that's really what we're here for today. Also, we performed a 2020 financial statement and compliance audit, and we're in the throes of performing the 2021 financial statement and compliance audit as we speak today. So in a very truncated period of time, similar to your Finance Department, including COVID, today, hopefully, we are turning a page and getting back to our new normal with moving forward positively with internal controls and the financial statement audits being performed timely for the city. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Doug Cash to tell you a little bit about himself, and also to talk about the, what we call the ICE, ICE report, Internal Controls Engagement Report. So Doug, take it away.
Thanks, Kim. Good after, I guess it is afternoon, yep, it's afternoon, council and mayor. I appreciate you letting me talk to you. First thing I want to tell you is that I want to compliment the staff and your First thing I want to tell you is that I want to compliment the staff and your council members on the assistance that they provided to our team in regards to this, under some very difficult situations going on, what was happening with the, the virus and the embezzlement investigation and trying to get this internal control exam done. The first thing I want to try to kind of explain real quick is that a, an ICE examination or engagement, I should say, is designed to look at a specific time. It's kind of a snapshot in time of what your policies and procedures are, and at that specific time and what people understand about your policies and procedures, the segregation of duties and those kinds of things, to be able to do that. And as you go through the report, you'll see that there are certain types of documents that we looked at, which I believe is on page two of the report. And we also interviewed 25 different individuals in the, in the city to find out what their understanding of the policies and procedures are. One of the things I like to kind of understand or explain is this ICE procedure is kind of designed for one specific purpose. If you think of, there's a, a term in my world, it's called the fraud triangle. It's made up of three parts. One of those parts is, is considered an opportunity to be able to take advantage of your job. What a, an ICE engagement is designed to do is to try to identify those opportunities and to be able to limit those opportunities for someone to take advantage of their position or manipulate it and take advantage of the city and to be steal, to steal from them. Part of the emphasis for us in this specific matter had to do with the embezzlement that had taken place and how that was manipulated and understanding that the city had made changes and improvements. And they asked us specifically to look at those areas to see whether they were, the changes they made were working well and being provided to the staff in reference to that. If, when you go through the report, you're going to see, I guess, highlights, asterisks, or however you want to put it, on certain items that are either already taken care of, were in a process of taking care of at the time that this report was done. The suggestions there were made to you and the staff, they're just recommendations. I can tell you that most of them have already been either looked at, reviewed, implemented, or taken care of. So the staff was very willing to do some of those things to help protect the, the city and its assets, which is a compliment to you and your staff in regards to that. The, the report's pretty straightforward. I'm not going to try to read through it or, or go line by line in regards to that. It's very, it's there for you. If you have any specific questions in regards to what more we did or those kinds of things, I'll be more than glad to answer them. I, I don't want to take up much of your time because it's pretty straightforward in regards to this, to be able to help your city move forward.
Questions? So first of all, you guys have worked with us through a very challenging time, and I just want to say how much I appreciate all of that. It's so nice to be where we are. Thank you, Cynthia and your crew. It's great. The confidence level and the clear, the clarity of the reports that we get are vastly improved by the work that's been done, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I wanted to add when I was reading the report, and I appreciate, again, thank you also for the work and recognizing what's been changed since then. But I also wanted to say to Jose and Cynthia, you know, when we recruiting you, we tell you how wonderful Durango is, how wonderful we are, and that's all true, right? What we don't always say is how much is you going to have to be dealing with in this first year? And I just wanted to echo the mayor, I want to say so much that has been achieved and been just ticking it off. And I want to give Devon some credit acknowledgement as well. Thank you. We've come a long way in the past year and a few months.
Thank you.
It was great to see almost every one of the preventative controls and the, you know, recommendations that were especially important ones we've already started. So thank you for implementing and jumping on board right when they probably come up and give recommendations. And yeah, I think it looks great.
Thank you.
I'll just add too, that I think you stepped into such a difficult, difficult role, and it has been a complete transformation of the department with the assistance of your staff. So thank you really for the work that you've done. I think that the community has such a higher level of trust. The openness and transparency also with Open Gov in addition to this report that has been a long time in, in the coming. And then the fact that you have implemented all the recommendations just speaks volumes. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the kind words. I do want to mention that one of the cultural changes that I'm trying to make inside of finance is having these internal control conversations on a daily basis. Just today, we were talking about a particular process and it's like, no, we're not going to do that because we need this separation. So it's, it's being entrenched in the, in the finance staff too.
So much.
Excellent.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ida Bailey.
Thank you. We appreciate you allowing us to be of service. And if anything comes up, we really feel like this report is a blueprint for action and you've accepted it and are working on it and certainly really enjoy the relationship as it transformed. And hopefully we are back on our new normal of delivering our 2021 financial statement and compliance reports on a timely basis, and you'll see us again soon.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, on to our second area, discussion regarding manual and orientation updates and review of dates for boards and commissions' annual appointment process. Ms. Harmer.
Mayor and council, as we discussed, the current version of the boards and commissions' manual that we've been running on was last adopted in 2019. Needed quite a few revisions and quite a few updates. And the mayor and councillor Beal were kind enough to sit in on a subcommittee and review the manual in depth, and we made quite a few changes. And the version that's in your packet is the clean version of what we've come up with. And so I would like to welcome any comments or any further revisions to be included before we put it on the consent agenda for March 15th. The telephonic resolution that is currently in there that is outdated has been updated, and there's a new version of that also in the packet that Dirk Nelson, the city attorney, has provided as an example. And again, comments on that if you have any.
Are there any comments or discussion items by councilors?
I'll thank Jessica and Kim for working through the details of a huge document and checking through it. And, you know, not the funnest way to spend a couple of hours, multiple hours, but I, I appreciate you taking that on. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, and staff was awesome. Amy and Fay have just been amazing, so. Any other comments or? I did, I did want to say there were actually two areas in here that I wanted to bring up to talk to council briefly about. One is the emeritus members. The recognition, in recognition of service and experience, any member who's served the maximum number of terms can apply, individually apply for, be nominated by blah, blah, blah. And there are non-voting members that can serve and, serve an unlimited number of three-year terms. And one of the reasons why I wanted to bring that up is because it'll actually allows for significant influence by one person on a board because it's unlimited, for example. Limited number of terms, I mean, that person could be there for 40 years and have a huge voice that isn't necessarily representative of the council that put them there. So one thing that I would like to suggest is the idea that if we do want to have emeritus members, and I'm not even convinced of the value there, but if we do, that they should have to be re-upped every three years if we're going to do that. Because I think each council should have the option of doing that or not. It shouldn't be stuck in stone just because it happened three years ago, so.
I agree. I, I flagged that as well when I was going through it. Then, huh, that's a lot of time that you could just be.
Yeah, does that work for you too? So that would be something then that we would probably want to change.
And I'm not certain of the value of the emeritus. They could always come in and participate in a public session or as an invited guest to speak on some historical perspective. So I was wondering if there was a background on why that was included.
I don't know. That was in the manual long before I ever came out here, and I don't know where it came from, quite honestly.
So the other one is associate members. And I, I think the value of associate members is great. So the natural lands board, as, as I've mentioned, had a member who was called ex officio, and really they're associate members. And the challenge there also is the same. That person has been on that board since a, I think a year after I was put on that board in 2010, and they're still there. And there's been no review of their position on that board. And I really think that that's really, that, that's important, that also the associate members should have to go through a process where council supports that, that position and supports that person in that position. And the need for it, because it, in the natural lands board case, it's, they're actually an advocate for wildlife. That's their job. They work for CPW. We don't have any advocates for any other of the values that that board is responsible for. And I know the members feel that they're advocates for that, but that's not their profession, that's not their job, that's not why they're on the board, right? He represents CPW there. So I would like to say that we need to, we need to look at, I, I also don't think the associate members should be there on a continuous, permanent basis like that, like every meeting. They should be there when there's a, a topic that they, we need their expertise, but I don't think they should be a part of it continuously.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah. So that would be another one we, Jessica, you and I might need to work on a little bit more to refine, if that's okay.
Right. If you would like to email me some language that you would like to see in the manual to replace that for both of those two items, that would be great.
Okay, I'll do that.
And then just a quick review of the, kind of the timeline for the 2022 appointment process and interviews. We had originally planned to advertise for applicants, advertising in the newspaper, social media, PSA on Durango Gov Television. We also, I think they do a press release, a news release as well, and the paper usually picks that up, as well as the radio stations pick that up. That would begin on April 9th. It would run in the paper and the applications would be open from the 9th through the 23rd of April. We would interview tentatively, and I know councillor Youssef might be out of town during some of these interviews, so maybe we need to reschedule some of these. We had originally planned on May 5th and May 10th, and possibly a third date if, depending on the number of applicants that we would need to do. So I guess the question is, do we need to reschedule those? Or do we want to hold, do we know if we want to hold the by Zoom or in-person? And then that would lead to an orientation that we would do on May 19th, which would involve council as well as the city attorney to go over some of those slides that were in your packet. We would update all the rosters and the, all the information online at that point, and then the members would join their new teams on June 1st. So the outstanding question there is, do we want to try to change the interview dates or, and can we confirm how we'd like to hold those?
Fay, can I, first of all, thank you for working on all of this, and Amy over there, I see you there as well. May 10th will be a problem for me. So what I did want to ask is, when we schedule these, can we schedule them so that all of one kind is on one day? So that if, like, if we have to miss a second day of interviews, we recognize that we wouldn't participate in the discussion of those candidates for that particular board?
Certainly.
Is that an option?
So the other question is, I think we have two boards that have more than the ordinance number of members. So this is one of those opportunities for us to allow that to revert back to their appropriate number. Have we taken that into account when we've been, when we're looking at this?
Yeah, we talked about it with the Creative Economy Commission. I know in our. Exactly. During the subcommittee meeting, we discussed that the Creative Economy Commission has already reset to the current number because we've had one person step down in the end of January. So they are currently at the current number, their correct number. The Parks and Rec Board is the one that has the additional member. And what we had discussed in the subcommittee meeting was that when it came up for the appointment process, we would give council the information based on the vacancies that should be there to get the board back to the right number. And if several people were up for renewal, they could all apply, but then council would decide how to fill those positions that were actually vacant.
And are those the only two that we have that?
Yes, those are the only two.
Great. Great. Thank you for taking care of that.
In the advertisement area, do you have in there to let council know, like, what positions are up so we can make sure that our, our commissions know? Okay, because I know that there was a couple of issues last year with people not knowing that there were up for renewal and.
Absolutely. They had missed emails. And so councillor Youssef brought that up on, on an email that I picked up and put in my file as well. I will let both the staff liaisons who are working with those boards know and ask them to reach out to all their board members that are expiring directly, because that's more one-on-one, they work with them all the time, as well as the council liaison that's on that board.
Excellent. Perfect. And then we did have six questions that were in this packet. Do we want to talk about that, or is that a different?
I think, didn't you say that that would be at a different?
I, I had anticipated we would do those at a different study session just based on time, but I just wanted to put it in the packet so council had time to think about those.
So we are right now, this, this is scheduled to take to 4:15, so if we want to start some of these questions.
I mean, I would think we should start them and get. Yeah. It's just questions about what we think on certain things about boards and commissions.
Oh, is this, is this, was this in front of us? If I.
It's on, it's on packet, yeah.
If I may, if we could determine the dates for the interviews first? If we could do that, finish that part of the conversation?
What about doodle polling us?
Can we do that? Yeah.
Because, because there's no way that we're going to be able.
Okay.
Yeah. I was going to say on the dates too, that as I told you guys by email, that I will be gone, but I also recognize this is a compressed schedule. So if you have to proceed forth, I, I understand. And it looks tight because we're bringing them on at a certain date and we want them joining teams by June 1st. So I just convey that.
So we'll send out a poll on that to all of council. Do you have a preference for in-person or on Zoom? Or a hybrid?
I think hybrids really hard in those situations. So I would go either Zoom or, or in-person. In-person is so much more interesting. How do you guys feel about that? I know that might make it harder, though.
It would make it harder for me to participate.
Let's just do, I would say Zoom then, that way we can make sure that Melissa and Barbara can be.
Can try.
Do it over the sections that I'm gone.
No, no. Well, yeah, but like. Yeah, we get that.
More, okay. More chance, I think. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, I'll try.
Before we start in on the questions, I just want to make certain, do we have consensus on the questioning the merit of the emeritus position?
So I'm, we're, I'm going to give language.
Okay.
To Fay, and then we'll put that before council again.
Okay, because I, I'm not even certain of the inclusion of it.
Well, that'll be all part of it.
All right. I just wanted to make certain because I was following.
I agree with you, and so I, I absolutely, though like the first question is, does this have value to begin with, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so on to the questions. So the first one has to do with the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission. And this was kind of my question because obviously I'm now the liaison to it. They really don't, so we've changed the purpose of them. They used to go and each one of them also had a spot on, on a board or commission. And they, then they would report back to the Youth Advisory Commission, and then they would also mention things to the mayor if necessary. So that isn't the way they're working anymore. And I really like what I've seen with them being focused on doing things for the community as a group, almost like they are the board and commission, if you will. So I'm wondering if we want to rename it to the Youth Engagement Council or something like that, because it does coincide more with their actual mission. They're trying to get their community, which is mostly youth, involved in civic activities and civic things. And so, and right now, I think it still says, does it still say in the manual, Fay, that they're, that they serve on a board or commission?
Yeah, I believe, I took that section out of the manual.
Okay. So that question can go away. But what do you think about the idea of changing their name? Because I really think it would be much more interesting for them to meet all of the councilors also, not just the mayor. Because we're all different and we all have different perspectives. And instead of just like, because they only serve, some of them serve more than a year, but usually that's a kind of a one-year thing and then they're off and gone. And for them to get to meet more of us, I think would be real.
I think that's a great idea. And you mentioned it prior to you being mayor, and I think it's a really good idea for them to meet more, more council and have the opportunity to interact with them. I think that's great. As far as the name, I guess when I was on the, as, as the mayor, we were referring to them as the Youth Engagement Council. them as the Youth Engagement Council. And so I, I think that there's confusion as to what.
Their name is.
What the exact name should be. But we could just formally suggest, I think you're absolutely right, you know, let's confirm and make that official change.
So if Faye put that in the manual as the Youth Engagement Council, would you all be comfortable? Okay, great, 100%. All right. The, another question that came up along the way, should the city provide compensation for board and commission members? Or maybe only the chair compensation ideas, rec center pass, parking pass? And I think that came up and mostly in conversation, something that you had with someone or something.
I think it came up in part from the work that you and I did two years ago.
Yeah, it came up, I brought it up because Erin, who is the chair of the Creative Economy Commission, had brought it up to me and said, you know, the amount of time that it takes to serve on a commission, you know, she was on the Creative Economy Commission for, I don't, I don't know, a few terms, I feel like. And she just, and she was like, you know, she's like, it would just be a great incentive to get more maybe diverse people that want to volunteer and be a part of the community if there was some sort of perk to it. And I, I understand that there's 125 members, understand that that could be a significant chunk of money or, but like you said, maybe the chair, co-chair, I'm not quite sure.
So in the past, well, it used to be that we had a thank you party and we haven't had that for a couple of years. And it was, the bad part about it was kind of in the wintertime, so it was at the library and it was indoors and it was kind of stiff. It would be nice if it was outside somewhere like maybe at the, that area by, at the rec center with the big open area there. And they also gave us things, like we got a notepad or something or a pen or some little gifts.
Swag.
Swag, perfect. And I think that that was a really good way to say thank you, plus people got to know each other. And that hasn't been happening. So I'm wondering if we want to make sure we do that this year, this summer, to say thank you and then see.
And I think they also at one year, and this is not too outrageous, every volunteer got a.
Oh, yes.
Local first coupon book.
Yep, that happened several years in a row, actually.
Yeah, we used to get that.
And I think that that's a really good value to.
And unfortunately, just for input on that local coupon book, I think we ended up with, how many, Amy, that never got picked up or people turned back in? I mean, probably 30 or 40?
Closer to about 16.
Wow. That people just did not pick up that we paid for.
I think there could be a better way to do it maybe, but that's an opportunity to donate to a group that could really use that, you know? So I don't see that as a lost thing. It could be more of our community support, you know, dollars if, if there were, say there were $10, there's 60 of them, $600. We give it to a group where they can benefit people who would really be able to take advantage of that or something. I don't think it's a lost cause, but maybe that's one way to do it.
You know, but to specifically answer the question you're asking, I, I, it's, I had never actually heard that conversation, but having served on one myself prior to council, it is a lot of work and some of the, you know, I guess I would be interested in understanding more about what the cost would be and exploring that option because of the various options. Because an incentive, at least possibly for the chair, would be something I would definitely consider. And do work really hard.
And I would like to add in also though, that at the reach, at the strategic planning, we directed Jose and staff to really think about the whole advisory board and what's, what's necessary. And it may be that they don't necess, all boards don't need to meet every month. I mean, there could be a period where it's very intense as you're looking at CIP projects and then it levels off. So in, in the conversation of compensation, I think we need to hear back from, from the staff, what they might recommend.
I absolutely agree with that.
And I firmly think that, you know, when we worked with the salt fab, there, there was an opportunity to really define it in a very different way than the other boards have been looked at. And I would add, you know, I asked the city manager when we thought the last boards had been really reviewed and I, I'm not certain that they ever have been. And so I think that's healthy. You know, I think that's a very healthy analysis of what do we want these boards to do and what do they need to do to accomplish the, the mission?
And we've talked about it for a long time. And I think as a council, we've struggled actually with following up with that exercise because of the time that it's going to take with so many different boards and commissions. And I, I guess, following up on Mayor Protem's question, can staff help us with that? Is that something staff is comfortable doing or is that definitely a council role?
I think staff can always help, but I do think it's going to be direction sent by the council as to where they're looking for us to, to do when that decision becomes finalized. It's definitely a partnership.
Perhaps maybe we could have one more study session at some point where we are providing some type of direction to move this project along forward, like, look at top five priorities for the, you know, out of certain boards. In addition to what Mayor Protem knows where they are suggesting, I would also suggest we look at possible consolidation. We've talked about that as well. So these are really important. It has become a lot of effort to manage for staff as well, as you've mentioned in the past. So I would love to see us proceed forth with.
We definitely, I mean, we definitely are. We're going through and again, it's the, we have a meeting on Friday with ELT and to talk this specifically and get into who would be the ones who would kind of be leading the boards and commissions of the recommendations of what staff thinks might work under the premise of if there was not any boards and commissions and we were starting over, to really kind of look at it a different way. Because sometimes we get lost and well, maybe we can do this with this one. It's like, well, let's just say we didn't have anything and we look at what's regulatory, what do we need for any types of recognitions and then what are some things that we use on advice? And then make a matrix to kind of make, this is what we come up with. So we, we are moving on it. We will start Friday to get that going, but it will take some time for us to get back because it's, it's going to be a lot of work. And definitely as we look through this process, we have to anticipate the questions and options and thinking, and so we will take our time to get to it, but we are going to move it with pace for sure.
And I think when we do the interview process, we need to be very clear to folks that we are on a parallel track here where we're also reevaluating and possibly re-envisioning the role of the boards and what they might do. So while you may be appointed to a board under these conditions, in a certain period of time in the future, it could look very different.
And then will you also, as you're starting afresh with a clean slate, just, just for analysis sake, would you also at that point, you know, have a line item just of a review of if it makes sense to add a compensation idea of some sort, incentive of some sort? Maybe it's a party, maybe it's more of an, an actual financial incentive, not, or a pass or something?
We could definitely, as we look at that, you know, kind of just see what some of maybe the communities around us are doing. I definitely think that a celebration at the end of the year is something that is quite common. It's kind of just a thank you celebration dinner, something like that or lunch, or we could do whatever we want to do. It is a breakfast, I think is probably more common. Compensation, that's going to tug in with some of the things that we'll have to look at and how does that work and what does that go through? And I, it would, it would be one of those ones that I would think if we were to do compensation just for the chair, would be complicated just looking at it from the outside because then if somebody steps up and then they were maybe the vice chair and they became chair for a meeting, do they get compensation? And it may open us up to where other board members are saying, you know, I'm doing just as much work as well. I would just be cautious, not saying that we couldn't, but maybe we start focusing with the, a, a good celebration that's well-planned, well-thought-out with some, with some gifts that have meaning. You know, that's something that means something and I think the council is talking on that. I think that might, that might work a little, a little better and be more equitable amongst the board members.
That sounds good.
Great. So the next one was, should the position of emeritus members be eliminated? And I'll work with you, Jessica, on the language on both of those and then we'll.
Yeah.
Move forward on that.
Perfect.
Should a person be able to serve on more than one board? So again, I think that would be something that would be good. I think it would be good to benchmark that, you know?
Yeah, sure.
So when I first started serving on the natural lands board, Paul Wilbur was on the natural lands board and the parks and rec board, I believe it was. I may, I may have one of those wrong, but, and then because, and we didn't always have enough people applying for boards. It wasn't quite as popular as it is right now. And so I also at one point in time applied for two boards and was told by a previous council that I couldn't do that. And I said, well, wait a minute, Paul's on two boards. Oh. So it brought up that whole question of should, should, and I, I can see how if we didn't have enough people applying, that that might be necessary in some ways. But I think that we've made it much more interesting these days and especially once we go through this process of, of reimagining what the boards could look like, it might even not be, it might be a moot question. I don't know.
I'm going to add a question at the end to that around diversity.
Okay.
Because.
Well, do I totally.
I'll wait till you get to that. Yeah.
So do you want to address this one or not?
I mean, I would say, I mean, like that one with the parks and rec and the, if it was natural lands, like, you know, the sales tax.
I could be way, I could be way off.
No, I know, but like, I mean, you can kind of see the overlap, but, and if there's not enough people and we need, you know, like, can we have a clause? But no, it shouldn't, like, there should be.
Don't we have overlap right now on the airport and the salt fab with Roger Zee?
Yes, yeah, Rogers.
Is he on the airport and the salt fab?
Yeah, that's true. But the, but so like, okay, in my mind with that, like, he is very valuable in both of those roles and in different ways. And it's not, oh, see, that's.
Yeah, well, so do we just want to leave that one the way it is? And if it comes up as a problem, we'll deal with it then?
I think it might be the exception.
Yeah.
Rather than the, the rule.
Yeah. Should people who are related to each other serve on boards at the same time? Especially the same board? That's, that's the situation that, that's actually what I think this meant because I, I brought this one up too, because I believe if I can remember correctly, on the natural, no, it was a natural lands board and a parks and rec board, they were married. And so when we had issues that brought the two boards together, they were always voting the same way. It was kind of a challenge. Yeah.
There's so many people when you bring them together, right, that should that be?
And we're hoping that we, I don't know, we're hoping we can deal with that too.
Like, I wouldn't say, I would, if they're serving on different boards, like, I think that doesn't matter, shouldn't be allowed on the same board, depending on how big the board is. That could be a definite conflict of interest.
And then you get into issues also of married partners, friends.
Living together, yeah, right, right.
Yeah.
What remains.
At what point, that might be sticky.
Yeah.
Maybe, you know, I think also some of this stuff has, during interview processes, the councils at the time can make those calls, you know, probably likely.
Okay.
Maybe, just.
Should city employees be allowed to be board members? In some cases, they're required to be because they have to do something with the, like, some boards, I don't, Amy, I don't remember which ones, but they have to be, they're required by the ordinance. But for example, should a city employee be on the parks and rec or should they be on the library board or should they be?
Would they be then recusing themselves when you have issues that relate to the budget and votes that relate to the budget? Even though it's an advisory role and the council can accept or reject any recommendation, what do you set yourself up for needing to recuse yourself?
I think it's complicated. I would say that in a lot of the, the areas, if you look at some boards that have funding decisions, it would get complicated. But I do know we've had a few employees express interest on possibly joining like the CRC as a board member. And I could see that bringing a lot of value in that realm as well. So I, I would have to say it'd almost have to be board by board of where that would go.
What about quasi judicial? That could, so quasi judicial could be a problem, so like the planning commission, for example. But the other boards that are not quasi judicial, maybe that's not an issue.
Unless they have budgetary responsibility with regard to the directed sales tax.
Well, maybe, maybe they have to be below a director level or something. I don't know.
It's interesting because in conversations like around ethics in the past that I've had with other counselors and, and other, you know, people is that the message to me has always been that you have to realize that even though you, at, at, at a particular instance, when you're not like in a council meeting, you're still always a counselor. Even though you might be saying, I'm acting as my own resident.
Yeah.
You're still always a counselor. And so as a staff person, it kind of is the same. You're still a city employee, but the city of Durango, in, in employee, in different, different positions within staff. But then, so I, I'm not sure that they will be able to remove that either in much the same way.
Yeah, and we do have a city staff, you know, they're the ex officio member of the boards. And so that's legitimate, obviously, but it's a, I, I think that's a very good question you bring up, like, how, how is it perceived by the community? Especially on a small board, like if there's only five members and one of them's a city employee, particularly if they might work in an area related to that or something.
And that's when perceptions.
I, I think it would need to really be thought through, although it's interesting with the CRC, I can see where that could be a real benefit, but I can also see needs, need often to recuse oneself.
What do you guys think? My gut reaction is that city employees should not serve on our boards and commissions because of the perception that, that they're, that these are supposed to be community citizen groups giving input to the city. And if you have an employee doing that, they actually have twice as much influence.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think so too, based on perception.
Yeah, I'm concerned with it.
Then we'll, we'll put that in the manual as, as a, as a.
And we'll use some language on that as well.
Will you send some language on that as well?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Require it.
Are required by ordinance or resolution. Yes, 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 absolutely, absolutely. And then you had a comment on diversity or.
Yeah, when you raised the question of serving on two boards and I felt like, oh, you know, we really need to have a variety of, of people and, and opportunities. And I, I'm very much struck by doing what we've always done, may not reach a more diverse audience that we're trying to reach out to. And I don't have the full answers, but as we think about this recruiting and Faye, I was listening to where you're going to put the ads and we could, I, I think we could really benefit from just brainstorming even with a few people. Where else can we be going up to the college? Can we be going to different nonprofit organizations where their clients might use those services?
The Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, how can we expand that reach so that we're being more inclusive and, and really seeking a diversity of thinking? And that's not just, in my mind, ethnic diversity. It's a variety of age, you know, a variety of experiences.
Seniors outdoors.
Yeah.
Companeros.
Companeros, senior outdoors, the, I read about the hive and I thought, wow, that's great programs that are going on. That's reaching a clientele. It, it may not be the, you know, the age, but particularly some of the student groups may be up at the college. I, I don't have all of the sense of it, but I know just putting it in the paper and on the website.
It doesn't get to.
It's not going to get to people.
Any other comments or questions on the questions or on the topic of the boards and commission?
Good questions and thank you guys for doing that work.
Your luck. It's been a two and a half year process for me. Alrighty, so now we're on to discussion regarding infrastructure advisory board rate recommendations. Ms. Baker.
Good afternoon, Councilor Mayor. I have some information. We've gone back to the IAB.
Can we check to see if anybody from the IAB is in the attendance?
Tom or Victor or anybody, can you check and see of?
John.
Blue.
Johnson.
And John Simpson.
I don't, can we, can we elevate them to, to participate if needed, just so that they're.
Sure, sure. And that was a.
Thank you, Allison.
Emma, you got that?
Thank you. So John and John are both members and chairman of the IAB, so they're welcome to chime in and add additional information to our continuing discussion. So we did go back, staff went back to IAB on the 22nd of February and discussed the, the additional information that we'd taken from the conversations here in council. We were looking at the original $704,000 recommendation for a reduction that had previously been discussed. In addition to that, brought into the discussion, the amount that would have been used to, to pay for the. for the Vector Garage and the administration building at Santa Rita Plant, since those were non-typical construction expenses, and we felt like those might be skewing our, our averages. And IAB, the recommendation that they approved after extensive and, I think, useful discussion, that with, their preference would be to retain the same base rates based on the meter sizes that were used in 2021, to eliminate the duplex rate classification, to eliminate the summer versus winter rate differential, retain the water plant investment fee, the PIFs that were used in 2021, to expand the allotted consumption within the tiers as follows, and I'll get into a little more discussion about that, the changes there, and to implement rate adjustments with the rate memorandum to accomplish the goal of meeting the $1.588 million reduction in revenue for the year. If you look at, does everybody have the document with them, or shall I pull that up on the screen? I do have it available. There was, I, I had sent a document out over the weekend that had Jared had put together a great.
22 memorandum?
Yes.
Yes.
It was dated 2/24. An acknowledgement again to Jared for really hanging in there with us in spite of his new responsibilities. He's done some great analysis and number crunching and really worked through it, hung in there with us, so appreciated. If we look at page two of, of that document, there's a breakdown that shows the current tiers for usage rates, tier one, two, three, and four for residential, commercial, tier one and tier two, and shows current breakdown for winter versus summer, the initially recommended by IAB rates year round versus having the winter and summer breakdown, and finally, the adjusted rates that would be applied to accomplish the $1.588 million reduction. The second section on page two, rate application, gives you an idea of the impact to monthly bills that would be accomplished by these various changes. The average with residential at the adjusted scenario is $28.28, which is a change of $5.81. Commercial, the average at the monthly bill adjusted scenario rate is $130, which would be a change of, a reduction of $43.09. So that's just to give you an idea of a typical bill. Obviously, there's more data there, the 25th percentile, 75th median, if you want to get more detail. If you'll go to page three, this is the breakout of the three different analysis, the, the current rates as they exist today are listed by meter size, those are our base rates. Currently, the base rates are intended to cover 25% of fixed costs, and that's something we'll be looking at more discussion of the appropriateness of that during our bigger rate discussion, rate study going forward. Secondly, you've got your residential with various different scenarios of what the tier rates are. Initially, for residential, IAB looked at tier one being zero through 6,000, tier two be, being two, yeah, tier two being six to 21,000, tier three being 21,000 to 36,000, and tier four being above 36,000. So those were used with our proposed rates in that discussion at the IAB meeting, slightly adjusted to meet the IAB, I'm sorry, the council requested amount of $1.588 million. Commercial rates, tier one and tier two stayed the same volume cutoffs, and the rates were adjusted down in the third column, again, as a part of meeting the 1.588 million target, PIFs staying the same. Total revenue reduction, the change from the current anticipated revenue is 1.588 million, plus or minus some change, obviously, depending on what the actual revenues and usages are. So that takes us to the end of the, the breakdown of what was ultimately recommended. I opened the floor, obviously, did any questions or comments. Mayor Protim Noseworthy was deeply involved, and I know John Blue and John Simpson may have comments that they'd like to share as well, and any questions that anybody has, we'll certainly answer.
Involved, but not directing.
I, involved. I think that was the word I, I hope I used, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, the only thing I think I would add, Allison, is that you premise this also on that it's the goal of, in part, accounting for the funds that had been collected for a purpose that right now is not happening, and that it would be very difficult, and I'm looking for John or John to jump in if they needed to, to actually go back and pay previous rate holders. And so the whole, there was unanimous, a unanimous view that this is going for current people paying. And then I think the thing that you added in here is two things, that it would be going forward, starting once it's enacted, rather than being retroactive. And then you've said this before, but I wanted to remind my colleagues on council, you've also requested a rate study that really helps look at this, but after council has met with staff to come up with what do we want to achieve with this rate study, rather than having some predetermined, you know, find us, verify this. We really wanted to look at what is it? And that's something that Jared had been asking for, for some time, for council, to really think about what's the purpose of that.
And I'm really excited about that. I think the, getting the goals that you're really looking for the rates to accomplish, you know, sustainability and affordability and conservation, these are all different options that you can put different levels of focus on. And working with IAB as well, I think we can really come up with a great program to solidify the rates and have something that we all feel comfortable supporting.
So it looks to me that the reduction, the reduction is not coming in the fixed cost, which is a meter charges.
That's correct.
And the reduction is coming approximately 800,000 in residential and 800,000 in commercial. So that's 1.6 million.
Sorry, I hadn't looked at it with that in mind. Let me do a quick addition here. Okay.
Yes, Jared's got.
That is, that is.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm, I'm glad that the, you're looking at the flow rates for your adjustments. I think that's great. And something that helps mitigate my concerns about your tier changes, because we had talked, I had mentioned that just changing the tiers doesn't actually benefit everyone. It actually brings people into a lower charge tier and, from a higher charge tier, and leaves people at the same rate within that tier. That, I felt was inequitable. And it looks like that has been addressed in some way, shape, or form by your adjusted rates. For example, the tier zero to 6K was originally a proposed rate of 2.72, and it's now 2.41. So you're dropping it. So now everyone who's in the tier, even the existing tier people are getting a reduction in their rates. So that mitigates my concerns to, to a reasonable amount. I'm not completely satisfied with it, but I'm, I'm, I'll let it go.
And they actually have been further reduced. You're looking at the, our initial proposed rate at, say, 272, dropping to 241. Actually, our winter summer rate at tier one was 316, and it's now down to 241. So it's a significant drop.
But the, but the winter rate, so you're just dropping the, you're dropping the, you're just dropping into one rate now, though. There's no.
That's right. Yeah. But, but look, the current is still broken out into winter and summer.
Right.
They're just coincidentally the same for tier one.
Right. Well, I'm just saying, I've supported the original proposed rates, with the exception of this tier issue that was bothering me, and now you've addressed some of that concern on the tier issue. So I'm, that makes, I'm very happy about that. So.
And thank you for making that clear to us. And I think that was part of what we brought to the discussion, was your, your response that said, hey, this, this looks good, but it's not really accomplishing what we're after.
Yeah, and other people are. Okay, well, great. I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I appreciate the conversation and the, and the effort on both the board's part and staff's part to, to accommodate that. The other question I had was, the, if I, if I remember somewhat correctly, over the last few years, we've been adding about $1.2 million into the reserve fund every year. And because of the fact that we were doing that, and we were collecting for a project that isn't going to be done that way now, that was part of the reason for, for, in my mind, for recommending a somewhere around a 1.2 or a 1.5 reduction, so that we're not continuing to collect more money and more money until we've done a study that shows what the capital projects we need to do are, and how the rates should be set up in order to support those. So I, I'm feeling really comfortable with what's happening here. I'm really happy about it. I think it's great. I think it's something that our residents deserve, and we, they deserve then to have a proper evaluation done. And I'm so glad you're on track about that. That's awesome. So, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Could I, I just had, Allison, I believe the, what we determined was that it was about a 1.5 or 1.6 million dollar collection exceeding it. So it depends on how, when you pulled the numbers out of the, the huge construction project. So it.
Right, but without that, it was about 1.2. Okay, cool. And any other questions or discussion items, Councilor?
No, it looks great. Thanks for all the hard work and the extra meetings for, from the IAB and Barbara.
I'd just like to jump in again, if I may, to give credit to the, the advisory board and to the staff. And if you listen to that meeting, I mean, it was really amazing how folks came together, compromised, you know, everybody kind of said, oh, I think this should be it, or I think this should be it. And there was this discussion back and forth where, like, one of the council members said, you know, now that I listen to you, I'm not as concerned about that, you know, right? It makes sense. Or somebody else said, you know, I can, I can live with this different number in a, in a tier system. It was really a sense of, for me, watching it, of, you know, making great recommendations through people. And I will add that the four folks that were there, you know, you have folks that work in the water industry, several members, you have an engineer, several that also are engineers, and then you also have folks that work in public health in water. So, and John Blue, I'm not remembering your background, but also you've been there for years. So I just want to give a shout out to them and to the staff for, you know, really looking at this and coming back with a plan that was unanimously supported.
I was just going to suggest too, that this is an example of board and commission work that is, for me personally, as, as a council, and it sounds like for all of us, very beneficial. The time and energy that they have spent diving into these numbers and really understanding the issues around this is, is extremely helpful. And, and I, I too, just want to thank all of them for their hard work and, and analysis and effort and recommendation to council.
Yep.
Thank you. Well, with your recommendation, move it forward to a request for public notice, if that's acceptable.
Support that.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, well, is there anything else? Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I suppose one quick question. My apologies, Jared Biggs, it's Susan Finisterre. We can begin to draft a, a draft, because this does take an ordinance change in order to take place. That's why we will, I think we've calendared a request for public hearing tonight. And so there will be a question and allowed for discussion. I just want to ask, would you guys want to take the IAB recommendation, which is the center column, to eliminate 1.17 million, or the full 1.5 that we did the additional math on?
Full 1.5.
Consider that, we'll be at the meeting tonight.
I support the full 1.5.
1.5.
1.588.
Yes. And do we have to wait until the ordinance is read twice in order to actually enact the rate changes?
Yes.
Yes.
We can do the first reading with the public hearing, and if I'm correct, and then the second has to be separate.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be able to have the request for public hearing tonight.
Right.
The first, the public hearing, first reading at the next council meeting, and then second reading, the meeting thereafter.
So that would be April 19? No, it would be, no, because this is the second, then on the 15th, it would be.
It'll be the first meeting in April.
Yeah, the first week in April. So then can the rate changes take effect as of the 1st of April, Dirk? Can we set the?
It's 10 days after publication, so it would be, say, another two weeks after that, so we'll get it published.
So they can't take effect until two weeks after that?
Right. The charter, the ordinance is not effective until it's been published 10 days after publication. So usually takes a few days to get it in the paper, so round numbers, about two weeks.
So the rates would actually take effect in May 1st? Is that, is that the cycle we're on?
A little earlier than that, because we were talking about a first reading in April, 1st of April, second reading mid-April. So it could be, it could, depending on how the publication falls, it could be closer to the 1st of May, probably.
That's what I just said, the 1st of May.
Right, I'm sorry.
Bill date would be May 20th, would be the first bill that anybody would pick up.
Right, but our billing cycle is monthly, right? So, okay, all right.
Could, I'm sorry, could I clarify? If we have first reading on March 15th, and we have second reading on April 5th, then would there be a decision that same day of April 5th on the rates? So by April 5th, there could be a vote on the rates. Then Dirk, could you then have your, the announcement so that it's possible, it could be effective April 20th, when you do your billing?
No, 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 the cycle is month to month, and the bills come out 20.
I see.
Yeah.
But then the other point to clarify, if the public is listening, your proposal is this is a 12-month reduction to accomplish what we've set to do, and then by that time, we should have the rate study.
Absolutely, yes.
Excellent. Okay. Jose, were you going to say something?
Uh, no, the, I just had an update before we ended.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jared. That was a good, good ad. So Jose, something else before we?
Uh, Scott Shine just got to me, the date that'll be extended to is March 18th.
March 18th.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to Scott for, and staff, as always, always helping me out and being on top of it. So thank you all.
And so, and that, that is online, that questionnaire, there's a link.
We have, there's an email. Maybe Scott could send us the email that we could, like,
Just blast.
Yeah, so that we, so that we could all forward it.
Gotcha.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Mayor, sorry to interrupt. I think John Simpson just raised his hand, and I just didn't want to get out of the meeting unless he had the, I'm not sure if you wanted to add anything.
Thanks, Tom, Mayor Baxter Johnson. Just real quick, don't want to take any more time, just want to compliment staff for being so responsive on addressing comments from council from the IAB. And it was just an excellent process. So I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, John. All right, any other comments that we need for our study session? Okay, then we are adjourned.